Good evening and thank you for viewing the November 16th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. First, we have a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Present.
Councilmember Watson is absent, but we have a quorum.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, you'll line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to the online comments. We won't be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to comment, please make sure that you either line up or raise your hand so that we can make sure that we see you. Also, for anyone that might be new here today, if you are wanting to speak in the first open agenda item, right up there where Fred is are our cards and we're gonna take, we take the first, we have time for eight people, so we'll do the first four folks. Thank you Fred, he's passing out cards. We'll take the first four people in person and then we'll go to the next four online. If we don't happen to have, you know, eight people in total, we'll go back, you know, and fit people in. And if we, if people happen to be shorter than the three minutes and we have time within that 15 minutes, we will go to more people. So, next we have ceremonial matters and we first, so what we'll do with these is we will have the councilperson will read them and then we will, whoever's reading that will go down and present it to the person accepting the proclamation. And then if those accepting it, you can go to the microphone and say something if you would like, you don't have to, but you can if you would like to. So first, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and that will be read by Councilmember Matthews.
Okay, proclamation, city of Arcata in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 12th through 20th, 2022. Whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2022 is being homeless is not a crime and housing is a human right. And whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Arcata and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas the California Center for Rural Policy reported in their Humboldt County Food Assessment that hunger is a daily experience and that more than 31% of adults experience food insecurity, while 37% of households with children experience food insecurity. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck. And whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable health care, housing, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food, and security, and people experience homelessness on any given night. Whereas the aim of the National Coalition for the Homeless is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services as well as meals, food supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to the homeless and hungry. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Arcata that November 12th through 20th, 2022 is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week and encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems. Dated November 16th, 2022, signed Stacy Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
My reading glasses. I just have a short statement because the proclamation pretty much states it all. And it's just really to raise homelessness awareness. My name is Winchell Dillonbeck. I am a McKinleyville resident and an Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives, aha, board member. I thank the Arcata City Council for recognizing National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Solutions to the homeless problem is the toughest and the most challenging problem for a city to deal with. While progress has been made on dealing with the homeless population, as we noticed with the establishment of the Safe Parking Program, efforts can still be made to strengthen the program. In addition, I urge you to support the establishment of sanctioned legal camps and tiny house villages where the unhoused would have a safe, legal place to secure their property, have decent meals, proper sanitation, and hygiene facilities, as well as to access the services that they need. Thank you.
Okay, our next proclamation is in recognition of Adoption Awareness Month, and that's for November 2022. Whereas children are a precious asset to our future, they will, they will be the ushers of a new day with new ideas and contributions. Children who are not cared for or provided the essentials in life will not carry the torch of our dreams. And whereas children of all ages, abilities, and ethnicities are waiting for responsible adults to step up, lend a hand, and say, "I will love you today." Children grow best in stable families and we support children receiving the best care possible, whether we are supporting birth parents getting back on track or through foster care or adoption. And whereas around 400,000 children are in foster care in the United States, more than one-fifth of them live in California. In Humboldt County, there are around 400 children in foster care. Many of these children will need committed foster parents and even adoptive homes. And whereas around 24,000 youth age out of the foster care system without ever finding new parents, sparking the need for a one caring person connection to help them avoid homelessness, poverty, unemployment, no further education, and lack of familial connections. And whereas Adoption Horizons is joining efforts with other child welfare agencies and organizations who are working hard to recruit, retain, and support foster parents so there is a resource pool of families for the many children coming into care. And whereas Adoption Horizons has been providing services to children and families for 40 years, assisting families who are waiting to adopt children domestically and internationally, and providing them with guidance, education, and support to be successful parents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata recognizes the month of November 2022 as Adoption Awareness Month. The council encourages Arcata's residents to support and celebrate families who adopt and to remember the children who are still waiting. And is signed by myself today on November 16th. And we have Cindy Savage here in person to accept that.
I wrote a little something. Thank you Mayor Salazar, and thank you Arcata City Council. You've been giving me these for quite a few years now. I'll be an old haggard lady someday coming in here. Adoption Horizons is celebrating 40 years of service. That's quite a long time for a nonprofit organization. I've been there myself 38 years. It's hard to believe, really. But 40-plus years ago, Sue Andrews and Kathleen Zamboni had a vision of creating a local adoption agency based on parent education and self-evaluation. Forty years later, the agency still stands by these principles as well as humane and positive services to the families who come seeking family expansion. Over the years, there have been many changes in adoption practice, but the need still remains for families. Currently, our office is working with Quality Parenting Initiative, or QPI, here locally, to improve and develop better practice models in adoption and foster care with the local child welfare services. There's always a need for foster care, so please call Child Welfare Services for more information. And thanks to Kathleen Zamboni and Sue Andrews for their vision and our Board of Directors for their ongoing support.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and that will be read by Vice Mayor Schaefer.
In recognition of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, November 2022. Whereas Hospice of Humboldt has been caring for those who are terminally ill and their families since 1979, patients receive heartfelt care so they can live peacefully in their homes or at the Ida Emerson Hospice House surrounded by their loved ones. In the last year, Hospice of Humboldt has provided over 25,000 patient visits and helped countless family members in Humboldt County. And whereas the heart of hospice and palliative care is meeting patients and their loved ones where they are, be it literally through serving them in the comfort of their own homes or emotionally by helping them to understand that choosing hospice does not mean giving up hope or quality of life. Hospice and palliative care are holistic, person-centered interdisciplinary support services that treat patients and their families, not just their illnesses. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt expanded services in 2022 to include home-based palliative care, palliative care gives relief from symptoms and stress that arise when someone is coping with a serious illness. Palliative care is available even if a person is still receiving curative treatments. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt provides grief support services and information to our entire community, including support groups and one-on-one counseling. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt envisions a community in which no one dies alone or afraid, and all who grieve are comforted. Hospice of Humboldt encourages everyone to share their wishes with their family, loved ones, and healthcare professionals. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Arcata that November 2022 is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. The council wishes to congratulate and thank Hospice of Humboldt for increasing awareness of the importance of hospice and palliative care and for providing these essential services in our community. Dated today, November 16th, 2022, and signed by Mayor Stacy Atkins Salazar. And do we maybe have Christine Miller on Zoom to accept this? Said, unconfirmed yet, but.
Yeah, I'm not seeing Christine on Zoom now.
Okay. Well, thank you to Hospice of Humboldt, and thank you for all you do.
And our final proclamation will be read by Councilmember Stillman, and this is a proclamation designating November 26th through December 31st, 2022, as the season of wonder and light in Arcata.
Thank you. Whereas Arcata Main Street and local businesses are coming together for the annual celebration of the holiday season, the season of wonder and light in the heart of Arcata, everyone is invited to enjoy holiday sights, sounds, cheers throughout the month. And whereas Arcata Main Street Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November 26th from 11:00 to 5:30, shall include local business gift previews and promotions and special edition of Farmer's Market and other holiday cheer and surprises. And whereas Arcata Main Street will host an outdoor holiday Sunday art market series starting on December 4th through December 18th, featuring local handmade crafts, music, art, holiday activities from 11:00 to 4:00 on 8th Street of the Arcata Plaza. And whereas on Saturday, December 3rd, Santa and friends will tour centers of the Arcata on a vintage fire truck, beginning at Valley West around 3:45, 4 o'clock. And they will go from there, they will go to Westwood and Sunny Bray, Uniontown, and back to the plaza. All across the town, with local residents are encouraged to help make the parade sparkle with celebration of lights starting in the evening. And whereas on Sunday, December 18th, Arcata Main Street will partner with Shaba of Humboldt and to light the public, why am I so bad at pronunciation, menorah on the plaza, Arcata Plaza to remain continuously lit for Hanukkah during December 18th through the 26th. And whereas on Friday, December 23rd, Arcata Main Street will hold the Last Minute Shopping with Downtown Arcata to promote and encourage one last show of support to local businesses. And whereas the Arcata Main Street encourages residents and visitors to patronize local businesses, support this community event series, enjoy a beautiful array of lights on the historic Arcata Plaza throughout the season, and to soak up Arcata's friendly small-town holiday atmosphere, and to choose Humboldt by trying local stores first in person before online, and shop our holiday spirit in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Arcata that November 26th through the 31st, 2022 is the season of wonder and light in Arcata. And the council also wishes to recognize Arcata Main Street for its constant effort to promote and enhance Arcata's identity, economy, and cultural spirits. Dated November 16th, 2022, signed by Mayor Stacy Alizar. And I don't think there's anyone here from Main Street, so I'm gonna accept it on their behalf because I'm helping out with different things for the holiday event. So thank you.
Great, thank you. So next, we have early oral communications, and the city council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting under item 12, as for things that are not on the agenda. So if you've got numbers one through four, if you could make your way over towards the podium, and we'll get going with you first. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand and/or dial *9 on the phone to raise your hand.
Hello to the Arcata City Council members. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I'm a community member and a student at Cal Poly Humboldt. Firstly, I want to congratulate Councilmember Meredith Matthews and the Planning Commissioner Kimberly White on being elected to the Arcata City Council. I'm looking forward to in the coming weeks seeing a new city council member, and I'm excited to seeing the civil communal discourse and these council meetings that's been quite missing from some time, and I'm looking forward to witnessing that in a new city council and in a new year. I want to bring attention briefly for the city council to just continue into looking ways to address the housing crisis in Arcata. I know we are currently doing that right now with the Gateway Area Plan, but this is just me reminding the city council members of the importance of housing here in Arcata. Data from the 2020 U.S. Census has an estimate of 34.5% of Arcata residents living in poverty. I believe in the July, I believe in July in Arcata's Public Engagement Report, many Arcata residents voice their concerns of experiencing housing discrimination. One community member shared their experience of landlords not returning their car, their calls after seeing their name on an application. We also have the 50% enrollment expansion of Cal Poly Humboldt within the next few years that will exacerbate the need for housing, you know. And as I mentioned, with the upcoming new year and a upcoming new city council member, I hope to just continue to see that this city council find ways to address and also potentially find ways to continue their advocacy in helping Arcata residents out when it comes to housing. So yeah, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise. I have a handout here, I'll give at the end of the PlanWest Partner Schedule, it's on page 82 in your packet. We discussed this at the June 22nd council meeting. The, we're hopelessly behind on this schedule. David Laia has said that there have been some revisions, but that the revisions aren't known to the public. I request a copy of the revisions as they have been made. It's been 11 and a half months since the draft plan came out, and there's been very little progress. An updated version of the draft plan came out on October 1st. There's a problem. It only has things that comport, is the official word, or that agree with the original draft plan. It doesn't have anything that doesn't agree. We're told that the changes that don't agree are included, are in a table, that's a present tense verb, but we haven't seen the table. It's been six weeks. The Brown Act specifically prohibits people from, the public servants, from deciding what we can see and what we can't see. I think it's time for us to see things that don't agree with the draft plan. Particularly, there's been nothing from the open house from January 10 months ago. I'll refer the council to arcata1.com site. There's a great study of the Railwood Trail that was done in 2010 that shows a beautiful picture of L Street. The plan was made with about 30 or 40 people. Karen Deemer chaired that when, as she was in with Environmental Services. And other than that, there is a real lack of progress on the Gateway Plan, I'm afraid to say. And the, they made a list of the topics that they needed to talk about. I think it's gonna take 18 to 24 months to go through this list, so something needs to change in that department. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Greetings, everyone in the room, city council members. Congratulations to those who were elected for the next term. My name is Joanne McGary, and I come here often and speak often and email often and think about our community often. And I carried a smaller flag today because it was a lot easier, but I still want you to know that I think about the overview effect and all in terms of our relationship to the earth and what we can do to help it. And I've been thinking about the past, remembering the past. I'm trying to be in the present, but I'm looking forward to the future in our community with the new makeup of the council. And wanted to remind you of my THC and my CBD components that I hope our community continues to and even improves upon in terms of T being transparency, truth, and trust, and the H, humanness, honesty, and, gosh, I can't forget the third one. And then the C was caring and compassion and community. And the CBD was courage, bravery, boldness, decisiveness. So those are things I'm looking forward to, can you hear me? Is it coming through? Okay. Looking forward to having happen in our future, especially come the New Year. So I have been looking back at, are you noticing it going off and on? No? Okay. I'm looking back at some of the old videos that I have participated in in previous city council makeups, and it's been quite interesting. And there is one that I will be sending you with Marc Andre and Dobie Klass in regards to the sewage treatment plant and their discussion about it. And that was the thing that was jogging my mind when I attended. And so remembering the past and looking forward to the future, congratulations to everyone, and I'll be back.
Thank you. Is there anyone who, we have time for one more person in person here? Okay, let's. There's no one online? Okay. Did you wanna? Yep, that's fine.
Hello to council. Congratulations to Meredith on her election. Look forward to the next few years. Thank you. I wasn't really planning to speak, but I will just take a moment because the last few committee meetings I've been at, there's been a lot of discussion about open space, and so it always brings me back to the thoughts of the open space on the L Street corridor. And so I'll just put one more pitch out there for the L Street Linear Park. There's a lot of conversation about it, and I think I spoke enough about what it means in terms of Great Redwood Trail and the California Coastal Trail as far as being a main point coming through Arcata. And just hope that's something you might consider as a possibility of maybe designating that area for a linear park. And that's all for now, but maybe talk about it later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we still, is there still no one online? Okay. Right, we're gonna go ahead and move ahead. We will have one more opportunity for things that are not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. So we're going to move into the consent calendar.
I realize it's not the agenda.
Yep, thank you. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. We have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November 2nd, 2022, and B, a biweekly report on dispersments. Would any council member like to remove an item?
Yeah, I just want to move A for very quickly.
Sure, okay, we'll pull A. And is there any member of the public or staff that would like to request that B be pulled?
Nope, nothing online.
So I would move for a biweekly report on dispersments.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, all right, let's go ahead and go to item A.
Yeah, just really quickly, I just wanted to make sure under the ceremonial matters, A, it's Ben Winker, not Ben Winkler. So, and then I would like to go ahead and with that correction to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you. That takes us to new business. So we have an introduction of ordinance number 1561, which is Amending the Arcata Municipal Code pertaining to the California Building Code and Companion Codes. Title 8, Building Regulations, Chapter 1, Building Codes, Articles 1 through 9, 11, 13, and 14. I believe we're going to have a staff report from our building official, Joe Bishop. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Arcata community. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, staff, and community for having me here. I'm here to answer any questions, obviously present this new ordinance. This is, every three years, we present code updates that are state law, but it just helps us locally to have our city ordinance reflect state law. One point that was mentioned to me that I need to clarify, just to make sure everybody knows that the fire code portion of the building code is adopted by the fire department because of the fact that they're regional and they don't have the same boundaries as us. So that's the one thing that's not included in here, but that does get adopted by the fire chief. So you were presented with some information, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Right, it seemed pretty straightforward, but do we, does anyone have questions on any of that?
Well, I had the opportunity to read it over and, because I was curious to what was happening with the building codes for the future, because they'll be three years in place. And they always become more stringent every single time it changes. And so there will be some more things to have to, hoops to go through to make it work. But I thought it was good that we have mass timber in here, and that will be an interesting thing for us to be able to deal with in the future. And I think it'll help a lot with new buildings, because you can actually do so much more, and it really works well with fire, the fire department. They like mass timber.
I agree, and thank you for bringing that up. And if anybody at any points wants to discuss mass timber, I'm all about it. It's a wonderful new, has all the benefits of the strength and compression strength of concrete, the supportive strength of steel, and rather than being carbon intensive to produce, it's actually a carbon capture- and rather than being carbon intensive to produce, it's actually a carbon capturing product. So, and I believe that in the next, especially ten, but probably thirty years for sure, we're going to see a lot of things happening with that. So definitely let me know if you have questions on that.
Thank you, because Oregon was ahead of us now. We are caught up with Oregon or whatever, however you want to say it, around mass timber, because they were talking about it before we had an opportunity to have it as part of our building codes. There'll be a lot more electrical vehicles requirements for our buildings if you have so many units, et cetera, and that'll be, well, I hope people get electric cars, because we'll have a lot of parking spaces taken up for electric vehicles, and that's all that can park in there. So, and they're usually up in front and center. And then if you don't have one, you get to go somewhere else and park in that, in that parking area for apartment buildings, et cetera. So I know that's one of the strong changes that we're going to see, too.
Correct, yes. New construction especially, but there's also a lot of provisions to help encourage. One of the next ordinances you'll see, I believe in December twenty-first, is a specifically electric vehicle charging station ordinance that we're required to present. So we'll get more opportunity to talk about that as well.
And we'll continue with sprinkler systems in homes and solar, which were under the old codes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this?
I see none online. Well, then I would like to introduce ordinance number fifteen sixty-one, amending the Arcata Municipal Code pertaining to the California Building Code and Companion Codes, title five, six, seven, eight, and Building Regulations, Chapter one, Building Codes, and Article one through nine, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen. And I heard Nancy say, and wave reading of the, reading of anything about the title.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. So next, we have ordinance number fifteen sixty, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city amending solid waste management provisions of the Arcata Municipal Code to incorporate mandatory organic waste disposal reduction requirements and authorize a letter of commitment from the city of Arcata dedicating flow control of source-separated organics. And we have a staff report from our Environmental Services Director, Emily Sinkhorn. And we have Emily Benve also, so sorry if you're, if it's you. Happens every time. Good evening, council members and community members. The two Emilys always throws, throws us for a loop. Before I jump into the specific presentation, I just wanted to note that Eric Keller Heckman, the interim executive director of HWMA, is online. He is here to assist with answering questions, but he does have a scheduled conflict of another council meeting at seven, so he might, might disappear before we get any questions. But I just wanted to note that before jumping in. Okay, and with that, I am going to pull up a presentation. So SB thirteen eighty-three, for short, is the Short-lived Climate Pollutants Act. Before jumping into this ordinance specifically, I thought it would be helpful to provide a refresher on some of the key provisions of thirteen eighty-three as well as refresh where staff has updated council previously. So SB thirteen eighty-three, organics recycling primary goals are to start to or continue to move California towards zero waste as well as reducing methane gas emissions from landfills, which is a pollutant that contributes significantly to climate change. For a little bit of framing, Arcata's organic waste, according to the HWMA Waste Characterization Report from two thousand and twenty-one, is about twenty-seven hundred tons a year. So to put it in, into context. Thirteen eighty-three requires a lot more than just organics recycling, in other words, composting. There's a number of, of program areas that cities are required to come into compliance with, one of which is universal organics collection services to all businesses and residences. And with that is the organics processing. It also requires establishment of an edible food recovery program, numerous education and outreach components to the broader community. There are recyclable and recovered organic procurement targets for the municipality to meet, securing access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity. So that is the, the, the capacity planning piece of implementing the edible food recovery program. And then there are significant monitoring, compliance, and record-keeping requirements. So thirteen eighty-three regulations were finalized in November of two thousand and twenty. As a refresher, staff provided an overview of those regulations to council initially in May of two thousand and twenty. We also returned to council in February of two thousand and twenty-one with our notification of intent to comply, which essentially provides the city with an additional year to come into compliance. And in May of two thousand and twenty-two, or I'm sorry, I'm mixing up my years, guidelines were finalized November of two thousand and twenty. We came in May of two thousand and twenty-one, initially returned in February of two thousand and twenty-two. My how time has flown. Returned in May of two thousand and twenty-two to provide an additional update on the city's progress toward implementing and coming into compliance with thirteen eighty-three. So we were last here in May. Here we are in November, and tonight really represents the first key action that the council is tasked with potentially making. This slide here shows a number of the various steps toward compliance. They are all in some way, shape, or form occurring concurrently. Various levels of progress have been made in each of them, and there's a lot of moving parts. So we have completed the organic waste recycling capacity analysis. That was through Edgar and Associates and HWMA, as well as the food rescue capacity analysis. And that was through that contract with a subcontract of Abound Food Care. Tonight before you is the introduction of the ordinance, which I'll get into in a bit here, as well as the first step toward identification of a short-term organics waste processing facility, which goes in some ways hand-in-hand with the ordinance. It is part of the implementation of that ordinance. We are also in process of developing the education and outreach plan as well as developing an edible food recovery program. We are coordinating with a number of local municipalities in the Humboldt County region, and we're working toward developing procurement analysis and recommendations. The last three tiles here, we will be returning to council in spring of two thousand and twenty-three to move forward with our franchise agreement amendments, the rate adoption of curbside collection for the future organics program, as well as working with our hauler on sourcing the curbside collection infrastructure. So that is the big picture of thirteen eighty-three and where, where we are currently at with moving toward compliance. The ordinance component before you tonight specifically is required to be adopted by the end of this calendar year. We have an addition, we have additional time to work toward implementation of that ordinance. So I want to set the stage to say that while this ordinance will be adopted before the end of the year or is required to be adopted by the end of the year, the implementation of that ordinance is quite further down the road, because we need to develop the infrastructure programs and rates in order to implement that ordinance. And that, that timeline is a bit delayed. So in some ways, this might feel a little bit of strange ordering, but the reality is that it's a requirement coming down from the state that we're, we're required to comply with. And we can always amend our ordinance in the future, should the programs not fit exactly with the ordinance that we have set forth before you this evening. So some key provisions of the recycling ordinance. Actually, to frame, to step back and frame the ordinance, currently, we have universal collection that is mandatory for garbage and recycling in the city of Arcata. So the, the community has long held a support for universal collection programs. That was adopted in two thousand and nine. And so this ordinance repeals and replaces and adds the provisions required to comply with thirteen eighty-three. However, that being said, the existing garbage and recycling provisions of the ordinance today are wrapped into this new ordinance, so they don't really change substantially. It's just a more, it's a cleaner way to amend the municipal code, is to bring a new ordinance rather than piecemealing it together. So just wanted to point out the mechanism there a little bit. So the key provisions that are new are adding the organic waste to the three-bin curbside collection system, or adding a third bin, in other words. We have proposed some revisions to the waiver or opt-out eligibility, namely, that would be the removal of the, as we term it, zero-waste opt-out. And I can get into the specifics of the why behind that if there's interest from the council. As well as one of our opt-out provisions is that if a parcel is vacant for two months out of the calendar year, they're not required to subscribe to universal collection. We felt that four months out of the calendar year felt more appropriate for that vacancy timeline. The other opt-out provisions include part-specific, parcel-specific site constraints as well as uninhabited or unimproved parcels. In addition to that, the ordinance establishes community compost operators. As the ordinance is written right now, there is flexibility for carving, carving out community compost operators to exist within our broader organic waste collection system. Exactly how that will look isn't something that would be managed on the ordinance level, but that will really come more as we're working with our current franchise hauler and developing programs and rolling that out. So I just wanted to note that right now the ordinance is quite broad, and we expect the specifics to be fleshed out further as we get into our franchise agreement negotiation processes. In addition, there are business and multifamily requirements around container limit, container labeling, contamination inspections, and education. There are provisions for commercial food generators, most specifically around the edible food recovery program. And there are provisions for food recovery organic organizations and services. Again, to reiterate, while this ordinance is coming forward before the council now, and it could be in effect as soon as January or February of two thousand and twenty-three, really, there won't be any felt changes to the impacts of this ordinance until we move through the franchise agreement negotiation process, the rate-setting process, and then the development and implementation of all the programs and infrastructure needed to implement those programs that are developed through the franchise agreement. So I just really want to emphasize that there won't be felt changes in the near term. The ordinance does allow for what is termed the phase-in of mandatory programs. So as these pieces come online, we're able to phase them in. So it won't necessarily be a everything or nothing. And our intent is to really work with residents and businesses to provide them ample time and education to understand the impacts of the changes of, impact, the implementation of the ordinance as time moves on. So going back to this tile of steps towards compliance, I spoke pretty heavily on the ordinance piece. Another item before you tonight is a letter of commitment for flow control for HWMA. And that, that ties in with the ordinance, because it is one piece of a key component of developing the necessary organics processing infrastructure to be able to process organics countywide. So the pre-processing facility has been a concept that we have been discussing and HWMA has been discussing for about a year now. It was a recommendation that came out of the Edgar and Associates SB thirteen eighty-three compliance, compliance roadmap. And essentially what it is, is it serves as a place for the regional organics to be pre-processed, meaning to be transferred, source-separated between what can be treated, what can be processed locally and what needs to be hauled out of county in the short term. And that, that would, that would fall toward HWMA. And for HWMA to be able to implement this facility and invest the capital resources, it's really imperative that they have what's called flow control, or they have some commitment of tonnage from the jurisdictions such that they're able to develop a cost-effective program. So what that could look like is the organics would be collected at the curb and delivered to HWMA in Eureka. HWMA would separate any material, like I said, that could be processed locally. So for example, green waste right now is able to be processed in county, and then the remainder would be transferred out of county to be fully processed. In other words, likely composted for that final processing. So the mechanism to provide, the, a piece of the mechanism to provide flow control would be this letter of commitment from the city council of Arcata. And that would, from there, be brought into a joint powers authority agreement, joint powers authority agreement amendment that formalizes the contractual obligation and agreement of Arcata designating its organics to HWMA. One other element that I wanted to highlight in, in broad strokes for SB thirteen eighty-three, and in particular to this ordinance, is the community engagement component. In an ideal world, we would have had months and months and months to be able to educate the community about this ordinance and what's coming and what to, and what to expect. However, we have been balancing that lack of time with these regulatory deadlines and really wanting to take our time to develop the best ordinance we're able to with the information we have as far as what we can expect the thirteen eighty-three programs to look like, rather than doing lots of outreach prematurely without really having good information and what to expect. And so, so I bring that up to say that while we have an ordinance before you that hasn't been broadly, and we haven't broadly engaged with the community at large on the specifics of the ordinance, we can always return and revert, return to the ordinance and revise it if we receive significant community feedback or when we receive significant community feedback. And as we start to further flesh out the programs, if there are inconsistencies or amendments that are required that we make to the ordinance, we can always come back and make provisions. That being said, we have conducted some key community outreach. We have held meetings with key stakeholders, including Zero Waste Humboldt, current small-scale composting operations, as well as being very regularly engaged with the other municipalities and Humboldt County at large to understand how different municipalities are approaching ordinances and finding consistencies and sharing resources as we're able. In addition, we have undergone significant business outreach with regard to thirteen eighty-three in, in broad strokes, as well as with the food recovery provisions that will be forthcoming. That was started early with our food, our CalRecycle Food Waste Prevention and Rescue Grants that we received in two thousand and nineteen, and that ran through two thousand and twenty-one. Contracted with Zero Waste Humboldt to educate businesses on the general provisions of thirteen eighty-three and what to expect, though certainly not knowing the specifics or the timeline. And then part of Abound Food Care through Edgar and Associates' work was also to do additional education and outreach as part of their food rescue capacity analysis efforts. So most commercial generators do have food recovery systems in place, or at least in mind. And, and there are, there are going to be additional tracking and reporting pieces that businesses will need to start, and that will be new. But in general, the foundation has been laid by and large for local businesses starting to donate edible food. We also plan to develop frequently asked questions as we move through the ordinance adoption pieces and as we start to develop a more clear timeline of next steps and what the community can expect. And we will be developing future outreach and regional collaboration as we plan for our program development and rate setting. So, that was a lot. The current decision points for the council this evening would be to introduce ordinance fifteen sixty, as well as approve the letter of commitment to HWMA for pre-processing. And then to give the council members a glimpse of the next near-term decision points, we will be returning with franchise agreement amendment language, as well as curbside collection rates that will need to be adopted, as well as approving potential edible food recovery agreements that we move forward on a regional level at. So for example, if we were to develop an MOU with environmental health or with the county to take some, a regional approach to edible food recovery, that would come back through the council as well in approvals of those agreements. back through the council as well in approvals of those agreements. I will stop there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, I believe, let's see, what time is it? 6:51? I think we still have Eric for a few minutes as well, if there's HWMA-specific questions. Thank you.
I just have like a really quick kind of, I think I might know the answer, but it's a good question in my mind. But I mean, it just seems like the process is, is kind of challenging, just having to approve something and then thinking and analyzing and going back. But I mean, I, I assume other cities are needing to do a similar thing, right? And that probably, I mean, even across the county, right? If we're all working so closely with HWMA and just, I guess my question kind of is, how, how are other jurisdictions kind of tackling this approach?
Sure. Sure. That's a great question. So the county of Humboldt and Fortuna both adopted their ordinances, I want to say, in early summer, and they are currently in the process of revising their ordinances. They were earlier adopters, and so again, there's trade-offs to both approaches. The city of Eureka is planning on bringing their ordinance to first reading on December 6. So we're all in a similar boat, and we're all taking slightly different approaches with the same outcome and the same state mandate of having our ordinances adopted by the end of the year.
And, and do, I mean, I feel like I should know this by seeing garbage trucks drive around and stuff, but I mean, do we, I know Arcata uses recology, is that Humboldt County wide uses recology, or are there other trash haulers that are going to be, or partnered with for this, or other municipalities looking to partner with different haulers on this?
Sure. It's a great question. So recology provides services to a number of jurisdictions in the county. There's also Tom's Trash out of Willow Creek and Hum Sand out of McKinleville. I think that that covers all of our haulers. I do know recology provides services to parts of the county, not all of the county unincorporated areas. They provide service to City of Eureka, as well as City of Fortuna, and other small municipalities. And so we have been meeting on municipal staff levels of all these various jurisdictions to kind of think through, could there be potential cost savings with developing more standardized, regionalized approaches as are appropriate to the communities where they overlap? So we're, we're definitely all in very good, regular communication to collaborate as much as possible, given there is that overlap and shared, similar, same hauler.
Awesome. Thank you, Emily. I appreciate it. Very thorough, always great information. Yeah.
Yeah, I will just say, you know, I don't have questions because I've been living this for the past year and a half on the Board of HWMA. I will say that I'm really glad that I'm seeing something finally come before us. It's nice to see some action being taken. I really appreciated how through this project, the municipalities have been really working together. I know it sounds awkward, but it is. I'm glad that Arcata is trying to carve out a piece for Full Cycle Compost and Local Worm Guy and some of our other small composters. And yeah, I'm just looking forward to, you know, moving on. So thank you, Emily.
So, back in probably 2010, there was a lot of discussion about a digester. Has that just gone far away?
It has not completely disappeared. That was something that Edgar &amp; Associates had included in their roadmap, their SB 1383 Compliance Roadmap. So I think it, I think it is still being considered on some level. And I would really look toward HWMA staff to talk through the specifics of where that might be, and, and sort of the potential feasibility of that. I think in the short term, really what we need to do is be able to process our organics quickly to comply with regulatory deadlines. And the development of something like an anaerobic digester would take a lot longer. So it's not to say it could never happen. It's just that it wouldn't be feasible to develop that in county to process that material in the near term. And so we're looking toward this near to midterm term out-of-county hauling while we work to develop the most effective in-county processing facility option. And potentially, that could include an anaerobic digester. But right now, we just haven't, we haven't figured it out yet.
Okay. Well, I just remember there was a lot going on then, when I was serving on that, that board. So I, I look at it as four cans. Some people have green waste, and then they have recycling, and they have garbage, and now they have compost. And then some of us are involved with the Local Worm Guy, or at least I am, and I have been probably for the last three years. And I see that, I know that you're working with all of them. So what happens with that?
Sure. So a lot of the, really, all of the specifics related to the curbside collection will be fleshed out during our franchise agreement negotiation process, rather than this ordinance piece. The, the vision right now is that the green bin would be both yard waste and food waste, and so the food waste would-
You have to separate it? Somebody has to separate it?
Yep. And so that is the-
Oh, a terrible job.
The, the organics, the pre-processing facility at HWMA is essentially serving that purpose. So a resident would have their green waste in their green bin. They would have bagged food waste within that to separate, keep the green waste clean and green. That goes to our local green waste processor, currently West Green. And then the food waste gets trucked out of county. How that is actually going to look specifically is still to be fleshed out with HWMA staff as they develop their pre-processing with our local operations, as well as with our franchise hauler. And then similarly, the, the community compost piece is another element that the ordinance is quite flexible right now for how exactly that piece gets carved out. And those conversations would really be had at the franchise agreement program development and negotiation piece of the process.
Well, I know it's really important to deal with the compost and our, our waste anyway, and that I think eventually we'll probably see some kind of an ordinance where we're not allowed to have garbage disposals anymore because of how it affects the wastewater treatment system. And so, you know, I'm hoping that we'll find someone that'll be a poster child in Arcata for a development that will have no garbage disposals, and they'll be all into compost, et cetera, to make that work. But Eureka had a trial program for a number of years ago, where they collected restaurant waste and they processed it. And I'm assuming that research was being used for this whole program. And then that closed. They had, I don't know how long they had that. I remember that being part of it. So I just, we have a ways to go. And I would assume green waste, if you're going to put the two together, there was a time where we had split bins in Arcata, where you put your glass on one side and your paper and cardboard on the other side. And I don't know if we'd have split bins this time. But then when you had a slip bin and you tossed it into a garbage truck, it was no longer split, even though you worked really hard to make sure everything was perfect. And then you got your glass into your cardboard, then your cardboard was not any good anymore because they can't have cardboard that has glass in it to process it. So there, you know, there are all these things. I'm bringing up the past. I know Karen and Nancy are looking at each other.
I just said, I said, she's really accurate tonight.
I remember it all. And, and I remember what it was like, and how we, how we went from one, one system, well, from the recycling center to then we had bins at home, and then we went to, we just kept going till we got into, everything mashed together. So I'm really curious about how this is going to work with green waste and compost together. And I've heard people talking about, oh, we're going to just dump it all together. It'll just be fine. Fine for us, but not fine for the processor.
Yeah. I will speak generally to just the questions of, well, we have three bins or four. Will they be split? What size will they be? Will there be bags of food waste in the green waste? And the item before you this evening, ordinance, is broad and flexible enough that it allows us to work with recology and HWMA and community stakeholders to determine those program specifics that make the most sense for our community. Our intent, we actually had our first kickoff meeting, official kickoff meeting with recology and really digging into potential SB 1383 program compliance pathways. And really, our intent is to work collaboratively to develop the most appropriate, cost-effective programs, drawing on that statewide expertise, because there's a lot of jurisdictions that are further ahead than the city of Arcata, you know, in our more populated areas. So we can, we can pull from some lessons learned and best practices to develop programs that work for our community.
Someone just ask you one other question. I've heard this, and I haven't gone over to check, but recology, or right now, is the plant open at Humboldt Waste Management? I heard it's closed. I don't know exactly what's going. They're doing some kind of something.
Sure. The Eureka Recycling Center is currently closed, and the reason for that is that is where this organics pre-processing facility will, is slated to be developed. So individuals can still bring their household recyclings along with their trash and process that. But all those special, special recyclable materials, those currently need to be recycled at other locations in the county. And there is information on the city website and the HWMA website of what materials can go where while that Eureka Recycling Center is closed, while it's being repurposed for a pre-processing facility.
I won't ask you any more questions. I just think about it.
I just want to say, just because I've been living, you know, going over this for a year, that ever since I've seen the presentation about how much food is actually thrown away has really made me aware of the amount of waste that my family generates. And hopefully, this will make people a little bit more engaged with, you know, what they're actually using, and how much they're buying, and just be really aware of your waste, and bring a little bit of light to that. So thanks, Emily.
I just, I want to say one more thing. You know, I'm just thinking about when you have collection, and just say, you have an apartment building, either your apartment building, you have an area with all those bins, or maybe you don't want them outside and you want them enclosed. So I think something we're going to have to look at is how, if you put all your bins inside, which a lot of places do have that, what kind of air circulation? Compost is not going to smell good if it only gets picked up once a week. So, you know, I think that's something in the, as far as the buildings are concerned, we're going to have to think about that. I'm sorry.
And the reverse too, though. No, that's a good point. And when you put it out on the curb, the various critters and things that want to get in there, we see trash torn up, and imagine they're just trying to get to that food waste. And so then that becomes everywhere too. But, I don't know. Things to think about when we get to that point. Yeah.
Yeah. In the ordinance that you just, before this item introduced, the building code update, part of Part 11 of Title 24 is what's called the CalGreen standards. And that includes all kinds of requirements, if Joe's still here, he's not, all kinds of requirements specifically associated with composting and recycling, and space requirements for containers. And then also in Part 11 is the Model Landscape Water Efficiency, no, I'm sorry, Model Efficient Landscape Water Ordinance?
Model Water Landscape Efficiency Ordinance.
Model Water Landscape Efficiency Ordinance, which, which requires mulching and use of, of composted materials as well for, for gardening. And so all of those are already being implemented by the city, and those are also part of the, the sort of SB 1383 targets in general. Much broader than just this ordinance is, is already being implemented.
Thank you. I just have a few things. One, I, from all, I agree with Councilmember Matthews in just in talking about it all the time. It really does make you more conscious of what you're doing. But I've just been cooking less and blaming it on my family of wasting food. So you might try that. Uh huh. You know, so there's that. But also, some of you, like, may have noticed, like, we're doing all this, and then we're trucking it out. Like, you know, if that's not, you know, I'm sure that that's, you know, everybody's going, hmm. And so, and we just really don't have a choice. But I'm at this point, but I am attending a roundtable with some folks from the governor's office next week, and it's regarding infrastructure. And so that's one of the things that I'll be bringing up in my part, is just coming from a rural area, like, we're doing this, but it's not really making sense. And so we could use some support in our community for being able to get that final piece of the puzzle. So I will be bringing that up in that meeting, as well as other things. And then I just had a point of curiosity, and it might be too early for this, and it's not directly about the ordinance, so I know that. But I've just been personally curious when we're talking about edible food recovery, about how that works in general, just knowing that, like, in the food industry, I know that's a very tricky part of their business model. So how do you, you don't plan to waste food in the first place. So how do you plan to recover it? You know, like, do you have any examples of that?
Yes. Coincidentally, today, we were meeting with a representative from San Mateo County. That county has been doing countywide edible food recovery. And they were speaking a little bit to the Humboldt County group about that piece exactly. And it really varies. They're just starting their inspection process, and they're starting their inspections fairly informally to understand sort of the landscape of, of excess food. And what they're finding is it really varies business by business. So for example, they're finding that Trader Joe's has 1,000 pounds every week or so, mainly of produce that they donate to food recovery. And then they'll see other entities like Safeway, who backhauls a lot of, or most of their unsold food. And that's different than edible food recovery, and trying to understand how backhauling fits into the landscape. Other businesses will donate excess food to their employees. And so they end up, there are provisions on 1383 for backhauling and donating excess food to their employees, where I think it's a waiver, but I, I can't recall top of mind exactly that mechanism. So all of that is to say that the, the landscape for excess food really does vary business by business, as far as how they're dealing with it, how much there is. Some businesses are really good at waste prevention in the first place. Others, you know, don't have their purchasing quite as tightened up. The work that we had contracted Zero Waste Humboldt to do under our California Food Waste Prevention and Rescue Grant actually included site visits to every single business to assist them with waste prevention, as well as understand how they could minimize potentially donated food. So, so that's a long answer. It is complex. It is, it's pretty unique and varied. The regulations do require that Tier 1 and Tier 2 generators, and I can get into that definition if there's interest, they do require that businesses of certain scales enter into, do, do edible food recovery unless there are exemptions because they're not generating any excess food, they're backhauling, or they're donating all their food, you know, in-house to their employees. If they don't meet any of those exemptions, they are required to donate their edible food to a food recovery organization. And that is actually required per 1383 to be a contractual agreement. So it is a new, you know, it's a practice that's very common. Most businesses already are engaging in Arcata in some form of food donation. We learned that from Zero Waste Humboldt's food capacity assessment, as well as from Abound Food Care, which is great. We have a really robust food recovery network and food donation practices. I think it's just that the regulatory components will be new for businesses. But fortunately, we've got a good foundation to build from.
That just seems like the hardest part to me. How do you, you know, how do you plan for that? But it sounds like they're already doing it. So that's good. We've taken up a lot of the time. So how about, let's hear from the public? Do we have folks that are wanting to comment on this? Yeah. So we'll go to in-person people first. So go ahead and just line up at the podium, just whoever, whoever gets there first.
It's very competitive up here.
Ready? Cool. Hi, my name's Isaac West. I am a founding member of Full Cycle Compost, one of the local community composting organizations. I also work for the city doing the Community Ambassador Program. And I'm just here to kind of, you know, we pretty much agree with everything Emily is saying. We really appreciate that there is some flexibility for community composters. We are pretty much a drop in the bucket compared to the franchise agreement. So in regards to that, there is, you know, we do about 26 tons per year, you know. It's estimated that Arcata produces about 2,600 tons per year. So we're thinking, okay, in this franchise agreement, we're, we're hoping that recology is going to allow us to, you know, see us as not really a major competitor, and that we can be what's going to be called an authorized hauler. So we think it's really important as a small business that you guys keep Article 2, Section 5410A in the ordinance. Just, you know, don't get rid of that, please, because that's the part where we can become an authorized hauler. And so we see ourselves, you know, we are already out there doing this. We've been hauling compost for two years on a bicycle. And, you know, the motivation behind SB 1383 is we're trying to reduce methane emissions. And so you said about, you know, we're taking all this food waste, and then we're hauling out of county, which we will hopefully not do that in the future. But the best possible thing we can do as far as emissions is concerned, is we can put that on a bicycle and bike it to a garden down the street, where then you can use the compost we make onsite, giving it away to the garden, so that they can grow more food that goes back to the community, and we literally close the loop. So that's where we believe the real sustainability aspect of this is at. And so, you know, we are a small group, but we would, are willing to help train other groups if they want to form in McKinleville or Eureka. You know, we are only five people, and we're doing everything we can. But that's, you know, we are here to help, and we're all on the same side. And I just really want to make sure that, and I think, you know, Emily's got this covered, but I just want to reiterate that- to reiterate that, you know, there's going to be potentially a mandatory subscription for your trash, like we see this third bin. And if that third bin is mandatory, it needs to be made sure that, you know, if you have a Full Cycle Compost subscription, you don't also have to pay for your third bin. You know, it's one or the other. Or if you have a, you know, you can prove that you're going to a community garden and paying to drop off your food waste there, you shouldn't also have to pay for a third bin. So, you know, there just needs to be a way to make sure that we are, you know, not making people pay double because then we're economically motivating people to not do community composting. And I'm not saying that this is how the ordinance is written, but, you know, it's just a valid concern. And I think that's about it. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doing a great job.
So, I didn't get a chance to go to my neighborhood compost bins that I set up in the Creamery District. So, I brought my compost here. But you don't have to see it. You just need to know that I compost in a backyard composting system. And I actually am an official city volunteer for the Environmental Services. And Saturday after Earth Day this year, I set up at the farmer's market a whole compost backyard bin display and tried to get people to invest in the $25 backyard bins that the City of Arcata has available for them for Arcata residents. Echoing a lot of what Isaac said, the reason this state bill is existing goes back to the climate. And it's methane gas from organic food waste and other organic matters going into the landfill and creating a greenhouse gas that we can no longer afford to keep spewing into the atmosphere because it's affecting our climate. So, as complicated as the states or requirements of this bill are, and it seems very elaborate and convoluted to me, all that's happening and what Mayor Atkins Alizar pointed out about hauling it away. I often remember what Julia Butterfly said often when I would hear her speak, both in the tree and afterwards when she came to my community. And was talking about throwing things away. And we can't keep throwing things away. And, you know, keeping things in our community in a circular way. So, what we do here in Arcata and in Humboldt, let's make it revolutionary and stand out and not just, you know, haul garbage and make it easy for people. And I'm a poor person. And I am in a small rental unit, you know, if there's five units in the building I live in. And we have two big recycle bins and two big garbage bins. And I'm trying to get our whole building to reduce the need for two bins of each. And I don't want to have our landlord have to pay for a third bin and then raise my rent, you know. So, we really need to find alternatives to this model of the third bin and paying for it and having it hauled away. So, for people like me who are willing and wanting to keep my compost in my neighborhood and have it turned into soil in my neighborhood, and I walk it over there and I turn it up and I manage it, and I want those backyard bins that are sitting on shelves in the city to get out, hopefully for the holidays and before the first of the year, into people's backyards. And I'm willing to really help with that personally because it's really important to me, as you know, how I feel about all these issues that involve the climate reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Arcadi City, uh, sorry, Arcata City Council. My name is Claudia Alfaro Hernandez, and I'm a local policy intern with the North Coast Environmental Center. Thank you for introducing Ordinance 1560 and allowing this topic to be discussed on today's agenda. As the discussion for this ordinance continues throughout this council meeting, we at the North Course, North, sorry, North Coast Environmental Center implore the council to consider further actions and implementations on Ordinance 1560 within the City of Arcata. The HWMA and other local affiliates have been working on compliance roadmaps and food recovery initiatives on behalf of the county. But with that said, access to a regional green waste processing facility will not be available to the general public until late 2023 if permits for the transition of the Hawthorne Transfer Station are approved. And that is if things go according to plan. The residents, the residents of Arcata cannot wait this long. With this being said, the residents of Arcata cannot fully rely on the notion of self-subsidation of the processing and management of their food waste. According to the 2020 U.S. Census, the median household income for Arcata is $38,603, along with a 34.5% of the city's population living in poverty. The growing cost of living have made this difficult for those who have, for those to have access to organics collection services. Along this, alongside this matter, many residential areas within Arcata consist of multi-unit complexes, most of which who do not provide access to green waste bins or composting resources. Sordid green waste cannot be collected if it is contaminated with general waste. As residents of Arcata, we are asking the City of Arcata to follow other cities in providing low-cost or free-at-home composting kits or bins and green waste processing services as a means to bridging the equity gap between residents and composting. Incentivizing and encouraging small community composting businesses is another way to speed up compliance in the event that a regional facility takes longer than expected to come to fruition. The Arcata City Council should consider further investment and integration of Ordinance Number 1560 within Arcata jurisdiction. Such ordinance implementation would allow our community to steer, steer towards SB 1383 compliance, reduce our methane emission footprint, and even act as a model city of compliance within Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, I agree a lot with what the previous people came up. I'm really in favor of trying to support the smaller businesses that haul away our compost for us. I grew up in a composting family. I, yeah, my dad was very proud of his compost pile. If you ever came to a family dinner, he'd probably have a long conversation about his compost pile and how proud he was of it and how fast it turned, he turned over, it turned over. And la la la. I have a lot of friends that can contest those conversations. So, I have always had a compost pile, no matter where I've lived. And when we started our business, we've been in business, we've owned a restaurant for 22 years now, and we compost the whole time there. And so, those of us who compost are very, they cherish their compost that they create. And so, I'm wondering what businesses do with, they are collecting their own compost and if they will have an opt-out, if they can prove that they have, like especially restaurants, if they're composting all of their food waste. And so, that was one question. And I was also wondering if we were still going to have a partnership with West Green for yard waste and if that was still going to be an option. Because that, for some of us who have lots of trees and stuff, that really comes in handy. And so anyways, I'm really, really, really happy that we're facing this on a state level, I guess, and a county level. And I think it's long past due. And I think my dad would be proud that I got up here and talked about compost. But, and I just gave away two five-gallon buckets of compost to a friend yesterday. So, she was really happy to go home to her garden with it. So, anyways, thank you for implementing this through, with the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia.
Yeah, I can attest, I've heard lots of stories from Jim Kombianik about compost. Guys, yeah, amazing. Yeah, I just think that a lot of creative solutions have been mentioned here because I don't think hauling it all away is the end-all. And I think Arcata tends to go with creative solutions to solve problems. And we have two 25-gallon tumblers. And like Patricia said, over the last 20 years, we've, and this is just for me personally because I think a lot of businesses and a lot of homes are going to really benefit from this and getting it out of the trash and getting into the processing facility. It's just, I think, probably a little problematic it's going so far away. But I do think if some people are generating their compost at home and solving that solution, maybe if you're deciding you just need a little fee or something to just support the whole program. But I don't know if they should all be subjected to the full, you know, cost of it. Because like I say, we have these two tumblers. And honestly, we're probably about a year or less away from retiring from our business, and we'll keep employing those. And I think it'd be just kind of cool if we do have some neighborhood solutions. And I like that what Full Cycle Compost is doing, North Coast Environmental Center, you know, pressing toward keeping it local and having these solutions. So, hopefully, maybe be creative in this whole process and not just the one thing, actually. I thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, Emily, for all your hard work. I wanted to thank you, Isaac, for all your hard work. There is an article about recycling food waste on Arcata1.com. It's in the humor section. I'll tell you why in a second. But it has to do with recycling in South Korea. They have, it has been illegal to send food waste to the dump there since 2006. It's mostly urban. Every apartment has a kiosk in the parking lot where they have disposable biodegradable bags and a disposal bin right there. So, make it very easy for the occupants of the apartment. There is a long article about this in The New Yorker in this last, past year, and a short article on Arcata1.com. It's in the humor section because there's a famous cartoon in the article on my website. It shows a group of raccoons standing on top of some food waste bins with also glass and aluminum recycling. And the caption is, "It's very considerate of people to separate their garbage for us." So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That was a good way to end the in-person public comment. All right, let's go to online.
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 1560, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Arcata, admitting solid waste managers, management provisions of the Arcata Municipal Code to incorporate mandatory organic waste disposal reduction requirements, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only, and authorize a letter of commitment from the City of Arcata dedicating flow control to source-separated organics.
I'll second.
And, and before I vote, I just, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about, where am I going to put this can? Not, not at my own house. But am I going to have to start cutting my hedges down in order to have two garbage cans, two recycling bins, now a compost bin? And in one property, I'm thinking, that's probably what I'm going to have to do in order to accommodate that. And then I'm thinking downtown, where am I going to put this? It's, it's, you know, you plan when you, when I built some 20 years ago, I planned how many things I could get in there. Now, I, I'm not too sure. How are, I think that's going to be a struggle for people. Anyway, it's going to be a struggle for me to figure out without taking out a whole, you know, good portion of a hedge of probably about eight feet.
Yeah, I can speak briefly to that, to say that we are thinking about that same challenge. We do not yet have a solution, but it is something that we've certainly been giving thought to. There is a waiver in the ordinance before you tonight that does allow for space constraints. So, not to say that that waiver would necessarily be intended to be broadly applied, but there is a mechanism for those really challenging situations. Our intent is to work with our haulers to develop a system that really does take into consideration the fact that an extra bin, especially in the more urbanized downtown areas, is going to be a challenge to, to work through spatially. And our hope is that we'll come up with a good solution. But I don't have one just yet.
Well, you could. Use buckets. But if they will, they pick up buckets. No, it does with that. And I'm just thinking how am I going to put this together with the worm, well, I used a local worm guy. I haven't, I'm not using you because I was using them before you came along. So, so anyhow, anyway, I just wanted to mention that because I'm sitting here thinking about that. Hmm, okay. It's another challenge. I vote yes.
Oh, we're doing it? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, affirmative.
All right.
And, you know, just one thing that I personally do want to add is reducing how much we're consuming that goes in those cans, therefore reducing the need for some like, yeah, bigger ones. So, that's definitely something that I just want to go around. All right. So, we, the next item we have is that...
That would explain, whoa, Joanne's frantic gestures at me. I was like, am I saying something wrong? All right. So, I'll say that again. Both Councilmember Stillman and myself have to recuse ourself on this agenda item. So, that would only leave two council members, which is not a quorum. So, we'll have to push this off into a future agenda when we will have a full five folks up here. So, unfortunately, we won't be able to get to that tonight. And so, that will take us to our last opportunity for public participation, which is, this is the open chance for public input. Again, the city appreciates public input. And this time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. So, please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. And speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes. So, we'll go ahead and start with folks that are here in person.
Thank you. I have a question before I start. Is the appropriation for the Gateway Plan not on the agenda now? So, it's not on the agenda? So, I can speak about it if I chose?
Oh, yep, you can.
Okay. Thank you.
That was, that was a good clarification. I was wondering where you were going with that. All right. I got it now.
Okay. I'll speak a little bit now, and I'll speak more when it is on the agenda. I want to be clear, I'm extremely very much in favor of increasing our budget for gateway-oriented products. But there's something really wrong with this. I urge the commissioners who are involved in this, or excuse me, the council members, to carefully read it. I've written a long article on Arcata1.com that I urge you to read. There's a problem. There's lots of problems. I'd like to see the problems corrected. I'd like David Loy to be present when we do have this on the agenda. I'm all in favor of the having more money. But this is for meetings. It's not for products. It's not for the actual Form-based Code. And it includes something like $30,000 for graphics for meetings. I'd like to see that money spent on the actual Form-based Code. And I was just saying, I'll, I can speak more when it actually is on the agenda item. But when I, when I urge people to go to Arcata1.com, I want to reinforce that I don't know, there's no mechanism for me to see who comes to the website. I set it up that way on purpose. There's no sign-in. You can come and go. I wouldn't know. Okay. In terms of the, the draft plan, the draft Gateway Plan, I also want to note that there's a blank page for visualizations in the original plan. We are supposed to have 3D modeling now, but there's no, there's still no visualizations there. I think that's a real missing element. And as I said before, I really look forward to having all the alternatives in, in, in print on that plan, including the long-awaited alternative to the L and K Street couplet, which is referred to as Plan B, which the Transportation Safety Committee has been asking for since January, 11 months, or 10 months ago. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always got to bring a prop to the podium. So again, my name's Joanne McGary, and the first thing I wanted to mention was, a while ago, I keep hearing this mic going off, it's very strange. Okay, okay. So I did bring up a few meetings ago, appreciating the acknowledgement that is read at the beginning of the meetings, and suggested that it might be a really nice thing for the City Hall to have a written version of that available for the public to see and know about, in addition to having it read regularly at the meeting. I think it's a really important component of who we are as a community to acknowledge the past and those who took care of this beautiful place prior to the now. So I would really like to suggest that that happened. There's a lot of things about the city that a lot of people in the city don't know about, and so I am taking it upon myself, because I really care about a lot of these issues, to really talk about it out loud and share with people and model even as I can. So the other thing I wanted to mention is this food container thing that's going to go into effect. I am really excited about it and am going to really kind of promote it, you know, on the streets, so to speak, and maybe even find a way that we can do a little fundraising for people, nonprofits in the community, to purchase some reusable containers such as this one, to benefit their nonprofit and to give people, maybe even as soon as the holidays, you know, the present of a really reliable to-go container that people won't freak out about in terms of, you know, it came from my house, and, you know, something like this might be a more uniform type thing. So I'm just suggesting something like that. And I picked up in Eureka today the latest issue of the North Coast Journal and read about all of you there on the dais making history, and it's a really great article. And I really, really look forward to watching you proceed, and I will be watching. And I wish you all the best. It is history, and I think you can be the All-Women Council as the Climate Action Council as well. So thank you for your dedication and your work. I know it's not an easy job. Mine isn't either, though. But I think we both, we all enjoy doing what we can to help this community and our planet. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any folks online? Okay, last call. There are no online public comments. Okay, we will go into council announcements, and I haven't had a chance to read that article yet, but the one cool fact I learned from all of this is that there are fewer, at the time anyways, fewer than 10 cities in the history of California that have had all female councils. And what I think is pretty cool is three of those have been in Humboldt County. So Blue Lake was the very first. I found that in the Los Angeles Times, which was pretty cool. And then Eureka and Arcata, so there we are again, Humboldt kind of leading the charge. So appreciated that.
And while I appreciate everything and all the congratulations, let's wait to celebrate until December 15th, when it's official. Thank you.
Any report outs or anything from council members?
Talk. Take it away from me.
That was strategic.
Yes. Well, there's no staff reports, is there? Okay. So, you know, I've been thinking about this, and I am hoping that we can look at this next year for the planning commission, and the council can come and sit if they wish to or whatever, but that we have presentations for each planning commission, possibly about 20 minutes before on various topics. So one is, I would really like to have our building official speak to the planning commission about the new codes, the building codes that we have, so they understand them. Because some of the planning commissioners didn't realize that we're going into new building codes as of January 1st. And I think it's beholden for them to understand that. The second thing is, I think it's really important for them to be able to understand what it looks like. One time, I just happened to be asking Joe Bishop a question, and on his screen, he had just come back, and he was talking about mass timber, and he had different buildings. Well, Sanitra's looking at me because he saw that. He came on, wondering what in the world we were talking about. And I think that would be important to show that and to show what's possible with mass timber and how the fire department actually thinks it's wonderful. Well, that's what he said that day. And so the next thing I would like to see, and I think 20 minutes would do it, and then they could get on with the rest of their business. And then I would like to see Michael Fisher, and I understand from Karen, that we're going to see from the Cal Poly, a presentation of 20 minutes of what is going on at Cal Poly. A lot of people know, but I'd like the planning commission to understand and also our citizens. So they'll know where their new buildings are going, which ones are going to have parking garages, which ones are going to be freshman dorms, et cetera, with on the whole campus, and how they're doing with the children's center right now. So that would be another one. And I know the fire department's supposed to speak to the planning commission at their next meeting, but there is a conflict because that's when the fire department board meets, and I don't know how that's going to be handled, but that would be really good for them to be able to talk about what's going on and their needs and how that can work. And somewhere, and so...
Can I interrupt you for, I just want to say, I think that's a good idea. I like that idea. And then also that, you know, Stacy and I will, Friday, this Friday is like kind of quarterly meeting with Cal Poly, and so we'll have, hopefully, a report out to all of you after that meeting, too, to be able to get those updates going as well.
I think it'd be really valuable, because one of our planning commission members refers that all the time, and I would just like to stop referring to it. You've had this information now, you know what's going on. And so then everybody knows. And then the other thing is, is that the consultants that are going to be working on the thing we can't talk about, and I would really like to have them think about superblocks. And in their information they provided, when I'm looking at, you know, because I could read it, we were allowed to read it, and I was looking at some of them and some of the sheets and what they're doing with form-based codes, and I think it's really good that we're having that, because I would like to see form-based codes, not just for a certain area in Arcata, but something we could look at throughout all of Arcata. And so in some ways, I'm really disappointed that we can't talk about it or anything because it should be further than that. But I think they should also be talking about superblocks. So one of these plans they have, and of course, I did email them last night and told them I would really like them to think about page numbers, such and such, because superblocks is something that they're looking at in Barcelona, because they looked at all, when they had the Olympics there, they had to build so many new buildings to handle the Olympics. And now they're looking at those areas, and how can they get the traffic out of the centers and have traffic running around the edges of them? And there's reports on that. And create wide pedestrian ways and et cetera within places where parklands or something within the building areas. And I think that would be a wise thing. Also, in historic preservation, we've been talking about building, form-based codes for a very long time, and they have an example of what would be perfect for Central Avenue in McKinleyville. Because that's been shown in historic preservation over the years, about how you can take your cities and you can bring them down, and you can move your buildings up closer to your sidewalks, you know, like we have zero lot lines downtown, but you can move everything in and you can rise, make buildings go up and whatever. But that's been a code, you know, something the codes have been, well, historic preservationists have had that presentation probably over the last 15, 20 years on form-based codes. So we just aren't up to par up here. We don't really understand them, and they can be scary. And when I look at some of the drawings, it's very scary, and because they're for very large urban areas, and so I'd like, anyway. So I'm not mentioning what I can't mention, but I am concerned about how to think about what we should be doing and how we should be thinking of all of Arcata. And let me see. So somewhere along the line, it'd be good to have a 20-minute presentation. I know Alderon Laird has a lot to say about what's going on with climate, what we're going on, and it'd be good to have him, I just saw a presentation he just recently, to have him come and talk about that to the planning commission and just deal with some of these issues. So the planning commission, when they're meeting, they don't have to keep going back and forth and discussing these over and over. They have a basis of information they've been given, and I think that would be really valuable. So that's my idea for there. I wondered how the ultraviolet light for the raceway is going. New topic. You know, we have down in the corporation yard, we're converting our raceway, and we're using ultraviolet, and I'm wondering how that's going.
I love that you used the word "raceway."
Well, they call it...
They do. So they, yeah, referring to our chlorine contact basin, because the water goes through, oh, we'll call it a raceway, a concrete raceway where it gets disinfected with chlorine. So we have, the council has awarded that contract. We have worked through all of the insurance issues and have a notice to proceed, and we are moving trailers on-site this week. So we will be talking with the council if we want to do a small groundbreaking, because really, the big piece of that project is this move from chlorine chemical disinfection to UV. So I think that is something this community has wanted to see for a long time and something that we should celebrate.
Okay, so I just wondered how that was going. Well, there have a lot of other things, but I'll quit. Save you all. Here's the microphone.
This is just us providing comic relief on a Wednesday evening. Do we have any other reports or? Okay, let's go ahead. We do, I need to confirm that we're going to have a meeting to certify election results and swear in new city council members Thursday, December 15th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, on everyone's calendars. Oh, you're going to be out of town.
I won't be out of, I will be out of town. And also, for the first meeting in December, and I know that we have now, we're going to have an item on our agenda as far as an appeal, and so none of you are conflicted, none of us are conflicted on that, which is good. So I don't know how I can call in on that or how that will work. And then I would have to notice it, and I can tell you what hotel I'd be in. So if somebody wants to come to that meeting, they can in my bedroom.
Yeah, we are still under COVID provisions. The state governor still has COVID provisions in line, so you could come in. If you can get to a Zoom connection, you could come into the meeting via Zoom until February.
Oh.
Yeah, you can just pop on.
Because you used to have to notice it.
And after...
Keep your bedroom door open.
Yep.
For anyone to come wandering in. All your people you're traveling with are all sleeping in bed, and you're sitting there at the desk for this call. Oh my gosh, those were the days.
Just to be clear, those days are coming back.
Yeah.
They were grueling days.
Yeah, that's kind of been one of the pluses of COVID, is just the ability to zoom in without having to notice. All right, so I think that covers it all, and we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Wait, I'm sorry. Councilwoman For Watson just wanted me to say that he was ill, and his doctor told him not to be here tonight. So I said it.
All right. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everyone.